Welcome to the All American Connection brought to you by Comcast and the city of Tupelo. For Comcast, I'm Russ Wilson. This program is designed to help improve communications between the city council, the mayor and administration, and the citizens of Tupelo. Our guest this week is city council president Dick Hill. Dick, glad to have you with us.
Thank you, Russ. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Well, as you know, we feature the mayor and administration, one council meeting of the month, and then the city council. And this week, it's your turn to tell us a little bit about what you do. Several years ago, we changed the form of city government from alderman and mayor to a strong mayor and council. Can you tell us a little bit about that change and a little bit about how the council operates and maybe even your philosophy of leadership?
Yeah. The mayor and the city council form of government is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city, whereas the council, we make the laws and ordinances and control the budget, set the budget. We have to provide the money to provide the services the mayor wants to deliver to the citizens.
So the mayor and the, is it the chief operations officer?
Chief operating officer, right.
They actually manage the department heads and have probably staff meetings and go about managing the business of the city?
I think it's more direction than anything else. The department heads do a pretty good job of managing themselves as far as the crews that go out and do their assignments. But the direction comes from the mayor through the chief operating officer down to the department heads.
So then the council is concerned with long-range planning, budgeting, money issues?
Right, right. Now, the mayor gets into long-range planning too. He has vision and we work together. We work well together. This council and administration have really, I'm proud of the way we work together and communicate. It's working well.
Well, I guess in, there could be, in your position as president of the council, there are several different management styles that are available to you, I guess. How would you term your management style?
Well, it just carries over from my business days. I'm a delegator. I like to delegate tasks and duties and responsibilities. I found out a long time ago that I don't do the best job at everything and I'm fortunate to have a city council that's diversified, a lot of work experience, and I pick the best people according to the assignment or the task at hand and let them run with it.
And get out of the way?
Get out of the way. And they are doing a great job.
Well, that's good. Do you, how many committees do you have, working subcommittees of the council? I know there are a lot of priorities.
There are, there are. We've got Budget Committee, Insurance Committee, Contract Renewal Committee, Town Hall Meeting Committee, most of these things we're working on or have done. We get planning sessions, code enforcement, we're working on that, and then Affordable Housing. Of course, now we've got a lot of citizens involved in that, that's a citizen committee, but it does have council presence on it as well.
Sounds like almost for a council member, not only are you president of council, but you represent Ward What on the city council?
Yes, I do.
Sounds like a full-time job.
This is supposed to be a part-time job. And I think I am myself and my fellow council members are a little bit surprised about the time requirements the job takes. But it's, we ask for it and it's enjoyable and it's fun to be involved with so many new and exciting things happening in Tupelo. I don't regret serving on the city council at all.
Okay. In the coming weeks, we'll be expanding our, this program a little more to talk with each of the council members and have an opportunity to learn more about them. Is there anything, I guess, that you want to add right now that you'd like for people to know about the priorities that the council has?
Well, we've got, we've got a lot of things on the table. Drainage, drainage problems, we've got to address that. Again, we'll do this through commit, we, citizen committees are so viable to us. And they're doing the bulk of the work out there. And you, and you know, you're a chairman of the planning committee, but you've got your drainage task force committee, park and rec, museum committees, all these things. They do, they do the leg fork, well, legwork for us and the background and the research and that.
Takes a lot of things to run the, run the city.
Tupelo's very fortunate to have such a large pool of qualified and willing volunteers to serve on these, in these capacities.
Well, I'd like to thank you for being our guest this week on the All American Connection. It's our second edition. We'll be back next time with a mayor and city council feature. Thank you for Comcast Cable Channel line.
To all of you in the audience and those watching at home, good evening and welcome to the September 19th regular session of Tupelo City Council. Before we begin the meeting this evening, we've asked Reverend Casey Stark, a minister from West Jackson Baptist Church, to give the invocation. Following that, Ms. Daphne Holcomb will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for Mississippi. We thank you for Tupelo. God, we thank you for the city council and pray that you just, that you give them guidance and wisdom as they meet tonight. Lord, remind them that their authority comes from you. God, we pray that the people of Tupelo would support their government and the people of Tupelo will help accomplish the goals that they set forth. God, we thank you for this and we just pray that you be with us now. Give us guidance and wisdom once again. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pray that you be with us in the All American Connection, in the United States of America, and that you be the republic of all who are saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend Stark and Daphne. With that, I'll now call the meeting to order and the first thing on the agenda is to confirm or amend the agenda, agenda order.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda to add 7.13 Public Works Bid, 7.14 Approval or Disapproval of Selection of Engineer for Major Thoroughfare Program, add 8.3 Study Pit Bull Dog Ordinance, add 8.1 Study Item, delete.
Okay. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion, comment?
Excuse me, what did we delete?
8.1 in the study agenda.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Do you have any recognitions or Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, South City out there, so I assume there are none, but city employees, do we have any recognition?
Oh, we don't. I have two of them.
Okay.
Mr. Hill, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd like to recognize one of our own this evening, Don Lyth, at a recent meeting of the Mississippi Recreation and Parks Association. Don was elected as the incoming president, President Lyth, and I want to congratulate him on that. And also, it is my pleasure tonight to inform you of an honor that has been received by Tupelo Fourth of July Celebration Association, and I'm going to ask Mr. David Dillard if he would to come forward and let me present this award to him.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. It is certainly a pleasure to have all of you ladies and gentlemen here with us tonight. But this presentation from the association presents the award for 2006 with a special event award of merit, the Tupelo Park and Recreation All-American City Family Picnic in the Park, July the 4th of 2006. And we appreciate the great job that y'all have done and it is a top-notch event that everybody looks forward to and everybody, thank you so much.
We thank y'all. We appreciate you. Any public recognitions? Any council members have any recognitions they care to? We've asked Buddy McCarty, chairman of the Affordable Housing Commission, if he'd come and give the council a report on his findings. I know the council's heard it, but we'd like for the public to hear it.
Mayor Neely. Members of the city council, we thank you for this opportunity to present our report. I'm Buddy McCarty. I represent the Tupelo Housing Task Force. Have with me tonight Mr. Bill Hammer, who is my co-chair. Mr. President, as you requested, tonight's Housing Task Force report is a condensed version of the condensed version that we presented last week.[693.62][693.62](laughter) And I'm glad you love it. Go ahead and go first and everybody's in a better mood.[701.12][701.12](laughter) Before I make my report, I've got a couple of qualifications that I want to be sure everybody is aware of. Housing is a complex issue. It really doesn't limit itself in condensed presentations like I'm making tonight. So listen with the knowledge that a true understanding of our housing review takes study and extensive due diligence. We found that our greatest obstacle to producing meaningful findings and recommendations was the overwhelming amount of information on housing. And two, out of the 26 talented citizens on our Housing Task Force, not one was a statistician. Some of our findings and recommendations are based on statistical data. We found some data was difficult to obtain. We found some data conflicting. We found some data confusing. However, we are confident that the data we used is at least accurate enough to support our conclusions. As the poet Maya Angelou so eloquently writes, "We did what we knew how to do and when we knew better, we did better." Brief history of our project, Mayor Neely's original March 2006 challenge to this task force was to investigate affordable housing needs in Tupelo and report on the outcome. Mayor Neely defined affordable as housing in the $75,000 to $125,000 price range. Our full report to what we hope is a permanent Tupelo City Commission on Housing has 25 findings, 14 recommendations, based on our research and analysis. The bare bones results and essential concepts of our study and review are as follows. Based on the population, income, and housing data that we had access to, there is no shortage in the number of houses in this affordable range of 75,000 to 125,000 in Tupelo, Mississippi. As with most residential marketplaces, some of the homes in this affordable, in this affordable range are more desirable than others when you consider age, condition, and location. But overall, we have a supply that is adequate to meet demand. Now, you may be interested in a few of the findings that surprise those of us on our task force. One, we analyzed the yearly ownership cost of a $100,000 home in Tupelo, South Tilla, Duddleton, Guntown, Baldwin, Verona, Planters, Shannon, and Lee County. The analysis included all taxes, home insurance, and utilities. We did not include some elective variable costs such as vehicle fuel or mortgage cost. Based on our analysis, Shannon had the lowest home ownership cost per year. Tupelo had the second lowest at $52 a year more than Shannon. This surprise, I mean to a man, the members of our task force because we, we thought it would probably be cheaper to live out in the county. Such is not the case. The facts do not support that. And I'm confident we had good data on that issue. Another fact, based on the 2006 MLS data for Tupelo, housing sales in Tupelo and Lee County through yesterday have been as follows. It's a pretty interesting statistic. In Tupelo, excluding Lee County, there, we have, we have had 825 active listings, 332 residential units have been sold. The median price of the unit sold is $108,387, which means half a thousand sold in Tupelo and then less than 108, and half have been more than 108. In Lee County, we've had 304 active listings, 76 have sold. The median price of the unit sold is $108,125. So note that the median price house is virtually the same in Lee County as Tupelo. Another fact, throughout our study, we found that you simply cannot talk about housing without talking about our public school. School quality comes up in virtually every conversation that we have about housing or have had about housing. Another fact, 85% of the respondents to our citizen survey support a more effective housing maintenance ordinance. Tupelo does not have a problem with rental housing. Tupelo has a problem with landlords that don't maintain their property on the same level as the surrounding home or occupied home. Could we have a housing crisis in the future? Sure we could. Sure. To prevent a crisis, including a shortage of affordable homes, we recommend an aggressive approach. However, housing is a complex issue. We have to be careful what we wish for. We found some of the, some of our, some of our findings were actually counterintuitive. How do we recommend that we deal with the overall housing issue? Housing is an important element in our quality of life, yet Tupelo has no overall, that I believe, no overall housing strategy or plan. We recommend that we develop a strategy. We recommend that this strategy be ongoing because as hard as we looked, we found no housing solution silver bullets. You can't do just one thing and solve this housing problem. You can't do just two things and then stop doing anything and expect housing to continue to make progress. It's got to be ongoing. We recommend that this strategy include the foundation elements of quality, quantity, and economics. We, we use a three-legged stool graphic that I showed you last time to represent the interrelated nature of a housing program. We quickly realize that if you have plenty, if you have the quantity of affordable houses that you need, but they're, they are poor in quality, you still got a problem. If you have the quality but don't have the quantity, you have a problem. If you have both of those, people can't buy because the lending institutions aren't cooperating, then you still got a problem. And then each of those have things that support them. So we found this whole housing issue to be complex and to be interrelated. Do other towns our size have strategies and plans that work? Yes, they do. Many other towns have. Calistoga, California, Paducah, Kentucky, Fairhope, Alabama, Fort Myers, Florida, Gaithersburg, Maryland, just to name a few. There's, there's an endless list. So we're not trying to do something that's new. I hope we do something innovative. We have three recommendations for you. One, take the leadership role with an aggressive and determined attitude in maintaining an ongoing comprehensive housing strategy that delivers a desirable home for every good citizen of Tupelo. Two, appoint six to nine qualified volunteers. Hire a full-time executive director with professional qualifications to serve on the permanent Tupelo City Housing Commission. The city housing commission really needs to be entrepreneurial in nature. It needs to be innovative. And three, utilize what remains of the $200,000 fund for housing improvements as startup funding for this Tupelo City Commission on Housing. This is an investment in our future rather than an expense. It's a big difference. In closing, I remind you that housing is a complex issue that requires a combination of citizen and professional leadership and consistent, ongoing due diligence. In the course of my work, and I'm not retired, as some have suggested, I travel around the United States. And let me tell you from experience, we are competing with aggressive, beautiful, well-designed, Our task force has confidence that with the right strategy, we will capitalize on our current housing stock to preserve and improve the owner-occupied rental and public housing that is already in place. We've got a good base to build on. We're confident that we will revitalize the neighborhoods that are in need and we have some. We're confident that we will build new housing that provides opportunities and options for all the citizens of Tupelo that people will want to live in Tupelo. As a task force, we are thankful for what we have. We're optimistic about the future in Tupelo and we believe that we can achieve excellence in housing. Thank you.
I want to thank you Buddy and Bill as co-chair and all the members of your committee for a job well done, very valuable and information. And we will, I'm sure the council and the administration will press forward with your With that, I'll close the regular meeting and go into the public agenda. The first item on the public agenda is no public hearings, so we've got citizen hearings. Mr. Jan Willis, Director of the Lee County Library, would like to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hill, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Excuse me for being a little hoarse tonight. It got cool last night and I picked up the cold. I came by tonight to say thank you to all of you. I feel it's a privilege to be your public library director there. I love the job for two reasons. I get to work with a staff that makes a difference every day in people's lives, from helping folks with genealogy to students doing their high school research papers, to folks who come in and check out books and they go back home and they use those self-help books to improve our neighborhoods and renovate our houses, to the children who come in and discover the joy of reading like I did when I was four and Manny Berry took me in her arms and let me discover Dr. Seuss. I have a lucky job. The second thing I love about my job is that it gives me an opportunity to say thank you publicly to people who support our library. That's why I'm here tonight. I wanted to take just a moment to tell all of y'all as a group how much our library appreciates that your city council has once again made us a priority item in your budget. Once again, you have reinvested more money in our library so that the next fiscal year we can even do a better job. And I wanted to take just a minute and to be brief for a change and to stop by and publicly tell you for myself, our administrative board, our staff, our friends, and all of our supporters how much we appreciate your increase this year and your support of our library. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jan.[1521.51][1521.51](applause) We appreciate the job you're doing and your staff and your board. You're doing an excellent job at the library. With that, we'll close the public agenda and return to the regular session. And the first item on that is to review or approve the Development Code Amendment.
I make a motion we adopt the Development Code Amendment.
Second. Motion and a second. Do you want to give an explanation of the code?
(inaudible).
Okay, yeah, there's Pat.
These amendments are the result of some work done by a number of council members who wanted to strengthen our code enforcement in residential neighborhoods. Basically, the approach was to take the overlay districts that had been adopted over the last few years in downtown and joiner and others and extend those provisions to all residential areas. So we did that. We eliminated the separate overlay districts and provided those restrictions on things like parking in front yards and outdoor storage are applied in every residential neighborhood in the city. There's also a few clarifications about items that were of concern such as home business. And we have increased the regulatory step necessary to allow home business to a major condition of use. It's basically property maintenance.
Any questions, comments for Pat?
On home businesses, did I see that, that you had eliminated there put the signs in the yard?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Any, any home business that would be required to have a sign would not be eligible for in residential areas. So there would be no more signs at home in residential areas.
I got a question about parking in the street. I mean, for instance, somebody's got a yard sale and the street fills up. So is that legal or illegal?
If that is an enforced question, I'd do, one that I can answer very well is to the tenant ordinance. I think the intent is for places where there were neighborhoods such as downtown where there's not room for residents to park, but transient parking to come and go at a yard sale, I think would not be considered a violation of this.
Well, for, for instance, my wife's having a son's school party tonight. So the street is full of cars at my house and that's not a yard sale.
Well, if you, if you look, and I think this may not be an issue where you live, Mr. Headman, it says streets that are less than 24 feet from curb to curb.
If they're less than 24?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the, not very many of our city streets are actually going to be under that restriction.
But isn't the intent meant to be something that's an ongoing process? It doesn't apply to occasional use company and that kind of thing?
Exactly. It's, it was originally intended for the neighborhoods where there were very, very small lots and people would bring four or five cars that lived there and they couldn't park for the night in their driveway, so those cars would be in front of the house all night or all day as the case may be.
Question on page 5, 9.6, 14. Talking about commercial vehicles, anything above a three-quarter ton, which also has to do with a duly pickup. What are you calling a commercial vehicle?
Well, it would have to have, in addition to that size restriction, it would have to be identified as commercial, advertising signage or commercial equipment or something.
If it does not have the signs on the side of the pickup, it's not commercial. Is that what you're saying?
Well, in this, we're... Well, then this was originally drafted probably 10 years ago. A three-quarter tonne truck is not used for personal, and of course, people that are driving big vehicles now.
This particular section's been there for how long?
Well, at least since 1997.
Okay, so this is not a new section.
Has any, anything changed about, well, for instance, utility trailers are just trailers period to pull behind vehicles with lawnmowers in them? Do they have to have a tag, or they still get by without it? Can we enforce that?
This does cover the issue of whether a trailer requires a tag.
Well, could it be made too? I mean, you know, these people run around all the time without a tag on their trailer and, you know, we need the money, don't we?
I think there is a law that you've got to have a tag on your trailer.
No, state law.
State law. And I used to have them on boat trailers. You had to have a tag on it, and they would get rusty and fall off, and that was a real problem. But you had to have a tag on it.
But these utility trailers, they run all over the place, and they have from one to three or four lawnmowers on them and things like that. They don't have a tag on them.
Well, I think they should have. I'm not 100% certain, but I think there's a law that requires a tag, and it's a matter of law or a matter of the code enforcement.
I'll find out. I do not know, but I will find out.
Any further comment, discussion, questions for Pat?
Yeah, this second one that you handed out tonight, is that just cleaning up some of the wording?
Yes, ma'am. There was one inconsistency when it came to the provisions about outdoor storage. One place it said that you couldn't have it in the yard. Another place it says you could have it if it's screened from the view of all properties. So, you could store material in a fenced backyard, for example. We want to make sure that was still legal.
Further comment, question? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item is review approved orders to close and vacate the Blue Bell Alley.
I move that we would approve the order.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Mayor, you care to explain that one to the public?
Yes, Mr. Hill, ladies and gentlemen of the council. The Blue Bell Alley, as it's known, is not used as a thoroughfare for the city and has no purpose. And it is the recommendation of the planning committee that the city found with it and declared surplus. And I concur in that recommendation to give it able to allow the government to develop it. Blue Bell Alley is property in the commercial kind of area from law department access to this property on the other side of the alley and in the rough. And as I say, it's not used for traffic anyway, so it's a loss to anyone in the city.
Any further comment? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item is to review approved options on employee health insurance.
I make a motion that we accept the plan that's presented to us tonight on the hospitalization insurance. Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Again, I'd like for us to have some council meetings sometime where the council could discuss these things, but that's not what you want, I realize, and I think we're missing a vote by not understanding a lot of it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, or Mr. President, I'd like to add that we're only dealing with the deductible. Those other two items, we will discuss later. We're not voting on those. Just the change in the deductible from $750 to $1,000 is all we're dealing with.
Any further comment, discussion?
Let me add this too. The copay would change from 20 to 25 on office visits. Other than that, you'd have a $1,000 deductible instead of $750. It would save the city money, it would save the employees money with their dependence coverage, and it would give us a chance to get better future rate increases with the loss ratio being better by having more deductibles.
I would also like to point out that there was a survey done for cities of comparable size, and the overwhelming majority of those cities are at a $1,000 deductible. Like 17 out of however many were surveyed.
I've paid some copays to $25 already.
And the, it's really by making this change, it's saving the city about $79,000 a year.
Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Mike Bryan, against, anybody opposed? One, Mike Bryan abstaining. Next item, 6.4, review or adopt an ordinance pertaining to electric rates.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is to pass TVA's rate reduction on to the citizens of Tupelo. This is a rate decrease, not an increase. Any further discussion, comment? All in favor, raise your hand. With that, we would close the action agenda and go into the routine agenda. And the first item of that is review approved minutes of the regular city council meeting is September 5th. And the special, excuse me, and the special call meeting of August 30th. There was two meetings, and the special call meeting of August 30th. Motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item is review pay the bills. The bills were paid by myself and Mr. Martin.
I move we pay the bill.
Second. Motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item, review accept the minutes of the traffic committee meeting of September 12th.
You can't say I'm going.
Second.
Motion, second, comment? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item, review approved request for mayor to sign power contracts with Tupelo Water and Light Department.
I don't move. Second.
Motion and a second. These are contracts with TVA, routine contracts. I don't think it requires any explanation on that. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Let's see, review approved request to close bank account.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion, second. This is a close up bank account with Bancorp South, Haven Acres Community Center. Project is complete, and the bank account for this project is no longer needed. Further comment? All in favor, raise your hand. I'm going to abstain. I don't know whether I need it to or not, but I have some stock in Bancorp South. 7.6, review approved fiscal year 2006 budget revision number 11.
I make a motion that we approve this budget revision.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Hope, would you care to explain that to the public?
This will be budget amendment number 11, and it will be the last budget amendment for this fiscal year. We have seven funds that are involved in this budget amendment. The general fund, the city capital projects fund, the fairground construction fund, water and sewer fund, community center construction fund, and then the narcotics forfeiture fund. In the general fund, we are asking to amend the general fund to receive a $5,000 donation from the youth soccer association for a utility vehicle to be purchased for Park and Rec, $500 donation from Walmart to the police department, who they would like to pass to the PAL program. Then we're asking in the unreserved fund, you have already authorized, when we applied for an ARC grant, you authorized a match for the city of $150,000 on the sewer project that's in, beginning on the third phase of the fairgrounds project. And so, we're asking to take out of the fund balance $150, and Public Works needs 8,000 additional funds for their fuel bill to, for the rest of this year. So, we're asking to use 8,000 out of fund balance for that. In Public Works, we are increasing their supplies for their fuel, 8,000. Park and Rec is asking to decrease their other services and charges and take that $5,000 decrease and increase their supplies. They need some supply money, so they're merely just reducing one category and increasing another. Park and Rec is then giving their $5,000 from Tupelo Youth Soccer for their utility vehicle. We're asking in the community service line item, the East Main Curb and Gutter project has $5,000 left in it. Some of this was donated money, and then the city had put money with it, and we had $5,000 left. They would like to be able to carry that over, and in order to do that, we need to transfer that to the city capital projects fund for phase three. So, we're reducing community services, and then we're transferring it over to our city capital projects fund. Other finance sources includes the transfer of the $5,000 to the East Main project in the city capital project fund, and then to transfer $150,000 match to the fairground construction fund. In the city capital projects fund, the $5,000 comes in as revenue from the general fund to the East Main Curbs and Gutter to be used next year, and then we increase that line item and set up a project for phase three in the city capital project for $5,000. Fairground construction, we're budgeting the grant funds that we will receive of $150,000, the $150 match from the general fund, making that a $300,000 project, and then budgeting the capital outlay for that sewer project. The water and sewer fund, the SRAF loan has some accrued interest. We have to accrue the interest on 9/30 of $119,907. So, we're asking to increase debt service in that particular fund and take it out of retained earnings to pay that accrued interest. In the community center construction fund, this is the Haven Acres fund. It is complete now, the construction of that community center, and we're asking to take, close that fund out with the $2,000 and transfer it back to the general fund. That leftover funds did come from the general fund from the original amount that we transferred over to that fund, so we're just closing that out as I asked you to close the bank account. The narcotics forfeiture fund, we're increasing the grant by $4,500, and then we're increasing other financing services for $4,500 for a transfer for salary reimbursement on officers that work within that grant.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item, review approved request to declare surplus fixed assets.
Don't move. Second.
Motion and a second. Have a list of the assets there in front of you. It's items that are no longer needed and need to be disposed of. Any further comment, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. 7.8, review accept minutes of the Tupelo Redevelopment Agency meeting of August 15th.
I make a motion to accept minutes of the CRA.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comment? All in favor, raise your hand. 7.9, review or approve resolution of authorization to submit Walmart hero grant application.
Don't move. Second.
Motion and a second. An application to apply for an $800 Walmart grant to the police athletic league. Further discussion, comment? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item, review approved resolution of authorization to submit highway safety grant application.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, that's permission to apply for $10,000 highway safety occupant grant for the Tupelo Police Department. It's offered by the Mississippi Department of Public Safety. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item, review approved North Mississippi Narcotics Unit Interlocal Agreement for 2006, 2007.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion, second. This is the same agreement we entered into last year and I think the year or two before that. Comment? All in favor, raise your hand. 7.12, review or approve training certificate for municipal court clerk Larry Montgomery.
Don't move. Second.
Motion and a second. Let's see. This is require, or ask that the training certificate of municipal court clerk be made a part of the permanent record of the municipal city council. Comment? All in favor, raise your hand. 7.13, pipe bid, Public Works.
I move that we accept the bid.
Second.
Motion and a second. Pretty much a standard bid for the delivery of polyethylene pipe. Yeah, low bidder, low bidder is recommended for the bid award. Comment? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item is to approve or disapprove the selection of an engineer for the major thoroughfare program. It was tabled on August 15th and is now off the table.
I move we take it off the table. Second.
All right, motion and a second. Read the vote on that? Take it off the table? All in favor, raise your hand. All right, now we are, I'm looking for a motion.
I move we accept the recommendation of the Thoroughfare Selection Committee.
Do I have a second? To approve the recommendation of the Thoroughfare Committee, do not have a second. Motion dies for lack of a second.
So, I have a question. Where do we go from here?
Senator, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering, since both of the groups had equal proposals, and it seemed to have been a lot of confusion, you know, on the final approval, is it in order for us, I guess it's not legal, if there's to refer it back to the committee to look at it again, or either allow the council to go back and start over and approve, meet with the two groups and approve the bid, I mean, the proposal?
Guy, do you want to address that?
Yes, Mr. President. I've looked into this and requested two of the council members, and it's my conclusion that if the recommendation is not accepted and is rejected, then the process has to begin If it's referred back to the major thoroughfare committee, then a new selection committee would have to be appointed, and the process of taking proposals and analyzing those proposals would have to be begun over. If the council wishes to take that issue on itself, the council would have to go through the same process, starting over with a request of proposals and analysis and evaluation of those proposals before a decision could be made. That's because of my analysis with the Mississippi Department of Transportation, standard operating procedures, and since these projects contain both state monies flowing through MDOT and also a couple of federal dollars that are dispersed through MDOT. also a couple of federal dollars that are dispersed through MDOT, I think that the MDOT SOP has to be followed.
I'd like to ask a question here. If it's federal dollars and they both met the procurement requirements for this and the federal dollars you can, to use as your match money, on that you could use the money that's in the Major Theraphaire Plan and just not use it to pay engineering fees? Let your, not use your federal money for that? And if you've gone through the process, it's already been gone through and you got a lower bid, are, why couldn't you accept the lower bid without going back through the process?
The MDOT procedures address that and what they say is that the local authority, in this instance, the Major Theraphaire Committee, if their process is not accepted, then if it is accepted, then you can negotiate an item with the successful or the recommended firm. If you can't reach an agreement on that negotiation, you can then go to the next most qualified firm, but you, not when you reject. If you accept it, you can do that, but if you reject it, the process has to start over. You just nullify the process that has just taken place and whether it's the Major Theraphaire Committee or whether it's the council, that process has to be begun again.
Could I ask, I, there's a lot, lot of other things in the city that has state and federal money in it and this council votes on it, so why is this exempt?
It's not exempt. I said that because the, there are state and federal monies involved, that the MDOT standard operating procedures should be followed and at this point, they have been, until this point, they have been followed by the Major Theraphaire Committee.
Well, but this, this council don't have the final vote. Is that what you're saying? We don't, normally the council handles the money, but we can't in this?
Don't handle theraphaire money.
Theraphaire money is, is dispensed through the Major Theraphaire Committee and the council ultimately approves the pay orders in the same way that the redevelopment agency money is approved.
Same way as well, I don't know.
The Tupelo Redevelopment Agency.
I don't, I'm confused. I don't know where the council wants to go with this. Are you planning on going, taking over responsibility of the selection and going through the bid process again?
Mr. President, I'd, I'd like to mention that due to the way the events have escalated in this selection, that I would recommend Nettie's recommendation for the entire council to act as selection committee. And also I would want to say that I would not want that to reflect toward the Major Theraphaire Committee in any way whatsoever, because I think they've done a tremendous job and I would hope that they would support the council's desire for that to happen.
Are you planning on going through the same?
As Guy has mentioned.
The point system, the standard point system?
I would say that it's left up to the committee. It's a, it's a new committee and we would determine that at the time the committee gets together and meets.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with being the selection on an engineering issue though like that and that, that concerns me. I'm, I'm concerned about some of the issues within all of this discussion, but do we want to, I mean, we depend a lot on our volunteer committees and either we have to work with them or not work with them. So I, I, I don't know. I, I'll do whatever the council wants to do, but I just have some concerns about being the one to, to do that.
I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why MDOT would have a problem when both have met the requirements, the qualifications. It's already been in the paper, it's already been advertised. They've already met the process to go through. I think there was a difference of opinion on qualifications there and there was a difference in the bids that came in or the fees that came in, let me say. I don't have a problem myself with Nettie's recommendation. I just kind of would like to see this thing put to bed tonight because there has been a lot of lobbying and a lot of politics going on in this and I realize the whole purpose of the Major Theraphaire Committee was to get that out of it and the council didn't put it in there and I just, I just don't know any other way to say it. And it's caused a lot of, you know, we've had to go back and try to re-educate ourselves on, on what engineering is and some of the terms and everythings that's used and that's kind of where I stand on it because I, I don't really like the way the process has been.
Well, I, I for one feel obligated to save the taxpayers' money every chance I get and now we're told we cannot because we could save over $200,000.
I certainly didn't say that the council couldn't save the taxpayers.
Well, but I mean.
I just said that you had to follow the same guidelines in the selection process that were followed by the committee when they made their recommendation.
I don't see why they, we, the council has to go change everything all of a sudden because this is the same procedure that it's gone through for four procedures, selection of engineering firms. I realize one of the firms didn't get the bid and they're very upset about it, but they went through the same processes with the other engineering firm and I think we need to, we're going to rely on the Theraphaire Committee and their committees to recommend the stuff to us. We need to take their recommendation. If we don't, fireball.
I, I agree with Mr. Jones. I may second the citizens of Tupelo voted by 85% majority to continue the Major Theraphaire Program. The vote was for a 10 mil tax levy to be administered by a committee of citizen volunteers. The Major Theraphaire Committee, that's, no, I'm not through, Mr. Chairman. That overwhelming vote was also an endorsement of the Theraphaire Committee, their project selection and work oversight and they're doing a great job. I commend them for it. In June, the committee was prepared to make selection for an engineering firm to design Phase Four. They were pleased with the way ESI handled that Phase Three and wanted to negotiate a contract with them. However, the selection committee persuaded them to send out requests for proposals. Two firms sent in proposals. Firms were advised of the selection process and how determination the winner was to be made. ESI scored the most points and was voted unanimously by the 18-member Major Theraphaire Committee to recommend they would be awarded the contract. However, the losing firm chose to appeal to the city council and apparently has won some support. This has caused a delay in starting Phase Four. The RFP process took two months and now we sat it on, had it on the table for a month. Our construction costs are going up with the possibility of missing development opportunities. This is a perfect example, the council getting involved in issues where it does not have sufficient background information to make proper decisions. I believe we should let the Theraphaire Committee do the job it was charged to do without council interference. Previous councils have not interfered to the benefit of the community. And I think we should follow their example. I'll support the Theraphaire Committee and their recommendation.
Mr. Hill.
I know that when the other, when the Theraphaire we're working in now, when it came up, these two companies were right reversed from what they are tonight. It still chose to.
And I'd like to make something.
Something wrong with it. I can say, Mr. Chairman, that there was no request for proposals were made for the water treatment plant, no request for proposals for the sewer line from Barnes Cross. I'm talking about, you're talking about requests for proposals and, and there was no, for the drainage, multi-million dollar drainage task force, no request for proposals. Thomas Street, Oakwood, Lakeshore Widening, Jackson, Coley Street Extensions, no request for proposals. They were all awarded to one engineering firm.
Mr. President, I'd like to comment to that statement. There's been a, as Mr. Birdell has mentioned, that this process has been used four times. That's incorrect.
Three times.
It's only been used one other time other than this one. First two was not used and the selection process was made as you have just described and it was, and I think that's an improper way to do that, that I think selection should be considered in every one. And you've just pointed out that it hasn't been being done in the city and I think that's not fair to taxpayers.
And Mr. Hill, I'd like to address something you said. You know, when you've got nine people on this council and the citizens elected us to do the best job that we know how to do with what we have to work with and we're trying to do that, you're not always, you can't even get this nine to always agree. We had a budget that was presented to us by Mr. Birdell Jones that was a balanced budget and it was gone over his head and changes made and then we had to go back and redo that and we did. And I think it's unfair to say that Cook Coggin is out there lobbying for this. If you want to know the real truth, the reason all of us have so many questions is because there was so much negative out there about the other firm that didn't get the bid and it wasn't coming from the firm that didn't get the bid. And so we all began to wonder why all these questions was coming up and wanted some answers to. That's exactly why it got to this point. And, and where are you going to get your answers to your questions if you don't ask one of the firms? Or go to somebody in an engineering firm somewhere else to answer these questions for you? Because I know a lot of this, it, it's engineering talk and the terms and everything that's used, some of us are not familiar with those terms. But I never have liked a negative campaign on anything and when you see that, then you start wanting to know the answers to some of these questions and I think that's where we are.
Well, I've, I've served on the council now over five years in many issues and some you and I are well familiar of, all the negative comments and things, when you've got this amount of money involved, that's just something you live with and you disregard those and do what you feel like is the best interest of the citizens.
That's exactly what we're trying to do.
But I do not believe that this council is as well qualified nor has the time to do the legwork and the research in projects such as this and I know I certainly don't and I don't have the expertise and I rely on citizen volunteers who put in that time and, and expertise and legwork to do it. And now we're trying to stick our finger into the thing and put politics into it and that's not usually, does not usually have a good end result when that happens. I've always supported the committees.
Where are we going from here?
Very absurd. All over again.
I mean, where are we going from here?
Obviously, the council wants to take over the selection process, take it away from the Theraphaire Committee, go through.
We're going to take it over, but we should be a fair man in, in the whole process.
It was explained to both firms on the front end, the scoring process. It was done fairly good. 18 members of the Theraphaire Committee, outstanding citizens in this community that voted unanimously to make the recommendation for this engineering firm and here we are trying to overwrite them.
Why did it come to the council?
It should not have come to the council. That's my point. And we just should have approved their recommendation.
It's expensive to the city.
There are more considerations in the price. If you pay any attention to the scoring report, there are efficiencies and other things. Obviously, you don't understand it or you haven't read it.
When you're talking about saving the taxpayers' money, there is not other considerations.
I'm not, I'm not going to make that mistake. Sir?
Mr. Mitchell, did you not say while ago that we could go to the one that they selected and after we selected them and negotiated down?
That's correct.
And my understanding.
Jones, let me say this, that's my interpretation of the, of the procedures of MDOT.
And I had talked to the engineering firm and they said they were willing. I may be wrong. Johnny or Randy, you may want to correct me, but I believe y'all said y'all were willing to go to whatever it takes to get the thing off center.
How about Ms. Davis's motion?
Don't have a motion. This is just discussion.
I asked for me, but are we going to do one way or the other? Are we going to sit here and discuss it? Are we going to make a decision or something?
Not tonight. We've just, the motion died for lack of a second. We're back to starting all over, which I think is a shame. The public deserves a theraphaire program to move forward and we're sitting on it.
Mr. President, if this died for a lack of motion, I'd make the recommendation we move to the next item on the list.
All right. I move into the study agenda. First item is eight point two. Review discuss portable housing committee recommendations. Do I have a motion? Move it up?
I would like for us to move that up and Mr. Chairman, I would like for us to get some work sessions. The council had stated that they would like to have some work sessions on this and get a little bit more in depth in Mr. McCarty's recommendations and if that's what y'all would still like to do, let's try to get together as a council and get some, Mr. McCarty to come in and get a little deeper into this discussion. If you do, then we'll move it up and I will get with Mr. Hill and we'll work that out. Well, we can move it up and that'll give us time to discuss it between now and then and if we cannot follow through on it when it's moved up, we can also always, at least we got it in a position.
All right. Next item, eight point three, dog ordinance. Move it up?
Move it up.
All right. There is request for executive session.
I make a motion to determine the need for executive session.
A motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand. Guy?
President, I need to report to the council on two matters pending litigation, Jameson versus City District case and an exaction case. I do not anticipate any vote coming out.
Okay.
And, and Mr. President, I'd also like to request that Bill Murphy, who is a member of our firm and is co-counseling the Jameson case, be allowed to come into the executive session.
All right. Do I have a motion to go into executive?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your hand. We're now in executive session. We'll adjourn to the council courtroom.